I don't know. I don't, I don't really know. Okay, guys, we're fixing to do showtime. Showtime. If you're willing and able, would you be kind enough to stand for an invocation and remain standing for the pledge to the flag, please?
Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us and our deliberation help us to be wise in the decision we make tonight for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead in integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from short sightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from the blind self-interest. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing 6:30 with the Henry County Board of Commissioners at 6:30 PM Tuesday, February the 17th, 2015 meeting come to order. I have several announcements. Announcement number one, the following items were advertised, the following item was advertised but has been postponed at request of District Two Commissioner who is missing tonight and will be not heard at this meeting. This hearing will be held at a future meeting and the property will be posted. Public hearing, Smith Douglas Communities LLC of Roswell requests the modification of zoning conditions regarding district requirement between homes for three lots. The lots are located at 152, 183, and 275 Hawkins Trail and Land Lot 242 of the Second District. Another announcement, the following items were advertised but has been postponed by applicant and will not be heard at this meeting. These hearings will be held at a future meeting. The property will be posted. Public hearing, case number AP 12-02, to review the appeal of Southern Digital Display LLC to staff administrative denial of a sign application for a sign located within the Norfolk Southern Rightaway where it intersects Eagles Landing Parkway and Land Lot Two of the 12th District's south side of Eagles Landing Parkway. This hearing is per court order of the Superior Court of Henry County, Georgia dated November the 6th, 2014, and that's in Mission District Four. B, public hearing, case number AP 12-03, to review the appeal of Southern Digital Display LLC to staff administrative denial of a sign application for a sign located within the Norfolk Southern Rightaway where it intersects Eagles Landing Parkway and Land Lot Number Two in District 12, 12th District. The north side of Eagles Landing Parkway. The hearing is per court order of the Superior Court of Henry County dated. If you are here for that purpose, we will no longer hear that and you can act accordingly. Now, on the acceptance of the agenda, Item Seven will be stricken. It says, "Request to appear by Jane Rutledge to discuss splash funds." That has been stricken. Ms. Rutledge called this afternoon and she's incapacitated. She said she couldn't be here. So having said that, will somebody move, consider accepting the agenda as published?
So move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. At this time, we have public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns and opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of this meeting. All persons wish to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, you must complete the public comment speaker form or you will not be recognized and you will be able to address the board for five minutes. So I'm gonna set the clock for five minutes. And in order that people signed up, we've got, I just got one, right? We have one, Mr. Elton Alexander. If you would, come to the podium, state your name, please, and you're gonna discuss South Metro Development Outlook and Overlay District.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good to see you all again. And I wanted to talk about the South Metro Development Outlook, which is tomorrow at the Georgia Rural International Congress Center in College Park. It is an awesome opportunity and I hope to see each and every one of you there tomorrow representing the county, trying to bring in new jobs and new development. At every opportunity, I think that we should take advantage of those opportunities because this is a game changer. We got Joseph Foles, of course, he will be there speaking. We have the CEO of Fifth Third Bank, he'll be there speaking. We have all the players in the room with, from Aratropolis, Atlanta, working on developing and promoting the South Metro area. And I say it, and the most encouraging thing that I heard from Aratropolis when we were there and we spoke, and Mr. Foles said that he would go anywhere, anyplace, anytime in the world promoting South Atlanta, South Metro Atlanta. That was encouraging. It was a game-changing moment for all of us to have someone of that stature to take the leadership in the South Metro area, to come and to represent us. There's been many of job announcements in the area. Today Comcast just announced that they were building a new facility in Gwinnett County and expanding their call center. It sure would be nice to see those job opportunities present themselves right here in our backyard. We have too many of our citizens leaving this community to work when those jobs should come right here in this community. I look at each and every one of you on the board and I say to you, I challenge you, your most important job is to, is to look and to look your constituents in the eye when it's time for reelection and say, and the question that I'm gonna be asking as one of those voters is how many jobs have you personally brought to this community? Not the Chamber, not the Development Authority. How many have you personally went out and sought for your constituents in your district and brought home? There's a lot of exciting new projects going on. Commissioner Holmes has Fairview Corners up in his district. I was very impressed by going up there, looking at it, taking a look at it. It is, you can see that vision coming to fruition. The Symphony at Eagles Landing, a beautiful facility in Stockbridge. And it's very encouraging to see those types of developments come before us. That was a lot of hard work and a lot of hours went into that with the, with the Henry Quality and Mr. Cash involved. Those are the opportunities that we want to see and we want to work closely with those. Tonight, I also want to speak about, in general, raising the standard, as I've spoken about it several times before, because in the, in the community, tonight, we're here to talk about the Fairview Overlay as one of those. But those, those types of requirements and standards as a community, we'd like to see those community-wide. We would. We would like to see those. We don't want to see ad hoc growth and development on our county. We want it planned out to the T. And we want to challenge individuals that come to this podium with proposals before you to give us their very best. We don't want Class C, we want Class A. And every time that they come to us, they should bring their best. They judge that based off of what our standards are and they jump as high as we force them to jump. When I go up to Sandy Springs and I go up to Dunn Woody and I go up to Sugarlope and Gwinnett, they make them jump pretty high. And somehow, every single time, they seem to make the jump. And that's what we have to do here, every single time. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a consent agendas. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda note before voting. On the consent agenda items, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete the items. We have three. One, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for authorization to apply for the Community Service Block Grant Contract for Fiscal Year 2016. We have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners approving the annual EMS license application with the Office, Georgia Office of EMS and Trauma for the Henry County Fire Department. And number three, we have a resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners to enter into a shelter agreement with the American Red Cross to utilize certain parks and recreation facilities as emergency shelters during disaster. Having said that, there's an opportunity to add or delete any items on the agenda. If not, will somebody consider moving to approve the consent agendas as read?
So move.
Have a motion District Five?
Second.
Have a second District, want any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, we're gonna recognize Mr. Vince Farah. Vince is many things to Henry County. What he's gonna do tonight is give us a, an update on rabies. And I consider Vince as our Henry County Rabies Coordinator. So Vince, you have the floor and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. I'll come before you tonight with your 2014 rabies report. Rabies being a deadly virus, it is my duty as the appointed county's rabies control officer to help keep our citizens and animals safe in this county and to prevent the spread of this virus. In 2014, we handled 154 animal bites. Of that number, 124 biting animals were either quarantined at an animal control facility, at a veterinarian's office, or at the owner's residence. None of these animals were available, were unavailable for testing. Whether victims had to go seek medical advice from their licensed physician, which in more or less rabies shots, they had to go take. We submitted 21 animals for testing to the Georgia Public Health Laboratory last year. Eighteen of the 21 tested positive for rabies. These areas are indicated on this map that I've put up here with the black dots courtesy of our IT department. These areas of the county were quarantined for 45 days or rabies alerts were issued and the animals in those areas were advised to be vaccinated. Seven of these animals were foxes, 10 were raccoons, and one was a bat. Five of these include wild animal attacks, where humans were attacked by wild animals. Again, they were advised to seek medical advice. With the help of the County Manager's Office and the Henry County Board of Health and our science shop and communications department, as well as the major media outlets, we were able to advertise these alerts expeditiously as possible by Georgia state law. And with that being said, that concludes my business.
Anybody have any questions or comments from the board?
Looking at this map, it looks like there has been some activity in the northern portion of the county. Can you explain, were those fox attacks or the bat attack, was that in the northern end of the county?
The northern part of the county would be right there at 138, as you can tell. Two were raccoons. And I believe the one that's top of the middle row, the top of the conjectured area with Kelly Town right there is, was a raccoon.
What about closer to Stockbridge?
Closer to Stockbridge was, those two were up there near the... Let me look right here, I'm in my teeth. Two raccoons and a fox in that cluster of two and then the one down below it.
Yeah, thank you.
The other clusters, Jodico Road area, Kelly Town, couple over toward Hampton, couple in the Ola area, one out on Keys Ferry Road, which Locust Grove rather, too, and then the Ola area is the one to the far right.
Thanks.
Got the same message. Anybody else have any questions or comment?
I'd just like to have a comment. Vince, I certainly appreciate you bringing this to our attention and, and the citizens of Henry County. This is very important to everyone and I just hope you'll continue to bring updates to us on this. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Let me take this opportunity. Two folds. One is Chairman of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Second one is the Chairman of the Henry County Board of Health. I've worked very closely with Vince, have been for many years in different phases of my life. But what I'd like to do, Vince, is I got a certificate here and I'm gonna read it to you. Certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Vince Farah. Henry County Rabies Control Officer and Henry County Animal Control Care and Control. In recognition of your outstanding dedication to the Henry County Rabies Control Officer and keeping the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the Henry County Board of Health, county officials and citizens informed of accurate rabies cases, patterns, and alerts for the safety and protection of our community, we offer our sincere appreciation for a job well done. Signed, Tommy Smith, Chairman of Henry County Board of Commissioners, the 17th day of February 2015. And I would like you to come up here to the board and get a picture.
Thank you, sir.
I know you're timid, but... Next, we have appointments of the Board of Directors for Connecting Henry. That would be four alpha in our book. I think we only got one name, or one area unless somebody has names. So I'll yield the floor to District Five and he can say his two names.
I want to appoint Sarah Billups from District Five and also Rick Sylvia, who's here tonight, I saw, to the Connecting Henry Board.
Okay, we have a resolution with two names from District Five. Anybody else have a selection tonight that, I'm not prepared, because we just got this last, two weeks ago and it takes a while to do that. So having said that, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing citizens to connecting Henry. So if somebody moving in that direction, have a motion District Five?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, on the community development, have a resolution requesting award of an RFP for professional consultant services for the provision of fair housing, education outreach services. Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The CDBG program is seeking to enter into a contract for professional services for the provision of fair housing, education, and outreach. The county published a request for proposals for which it received four proposals in response on December 30th, 2014. Through its evaluation process, the review committee found the proposal from Metro Fair Housing Services, Inc. to have the highest score. The community development department proposes a contract between the county and Metro Fair Housing Services, Inc. to provide fair housing, education, and outreach. Such services will serve as a component of the county's efforts to satisfy the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, which requires that the communities receiving CDBG funds affirmatively further fair housing. Staff recommends entering into a contract with Metro Fair Housing for the provision of fair housing, education, and outreach at an annual cost of $41,680 to be paid through the CDBG program grant funds. The initial term of the contract shall be one year from the date of execution, with the possibility of being renewed for two additional one-year periods. Staff recommends approval of the contract and the chairman's being authorized to execute all appropriate documents.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Not, we have a resolution awarding RFP for professional services for the community development block grant program in the community development department. Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transit, we have a resolution requesting authorization to apply for a Georgia DOT Section 5311 Rural Transportation Transit Operating Assistance Grant.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. This is just an application to, for approval for the Georgia DOT 5311 Rural Grant. For $520,211.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we don't have a resolution to amend all this, but we do have an agreement for Transit Operational Assistance between Department of Transportation, State of Georgia, Henry County, Project Number T 005329. And we have a resolution to that effect. If somebody would move in that direction.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
From District One, second from District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, have a resolution requesting approval of an amendment to the FY 2014 budget. Ms. Sorrow, good evening.
Good evening. Before you have a resolution to amend the 2014-15 budget, this is the Sixth Amendment for this year. We are asking to use fund balance in the amount of $1,476,532 for the fire department to purchase two remounts, ambulances, and two Class A engines and all the equipment needed for each of those items. We are asking also for the fire, I meant for the police department in the amount of $582,324 for the police department's 27 vehicles that you will see later on tonight, and this will outfit each of those vehicles. This is only to secure the funding, not to exceed those amounts.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the Fiscal Year 2014-2015 budget. This is the Fifth Amendment. If somebody moving in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion District Five?
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Public Works, we have a resolution requesting authorization to purchase one Grado, correction, SL 3100 IV four times two hydraulic excavator, approve of a, approval of a budget amendment. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Henry County DOT has an aging equipment fleet. The request here is to replace asset number 4323, which is a 1995 Grado. This Grado has gone past its service life. We found that the Grado can be bought on an NJPA contract, which is a nationwide contract that purchasing, purchasing has reviewed and is comfortable with us using. The equipment will, will be bought from Tractor and Equipment Company. As the chairman stated, the Grado is an XL 3100 four, four by two hydraulic excavator remote with high speed, highway speed, again, a four by two with air conditioning. And for those that may not know exactly what a Grado is... Y'all have probably seen us running up and down the road with this. It's a portable excavator with the arm out there having a bucket on it that can articulate in and out and rotate side to side. We use them a lot to clean out ditches, generally to remove trees from the roadway, load up various materials. The beauty of this machine is it's, can relocate from one site to another without us having to transport it on a low buoy. The current machine that we have, again, is a 1995, and it's just wore out. So we're asking to be, for it to be replaced and buy it on a nationwide contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have a question.
Jerry, what's lifespan on this vehicle?
I think the lifespan on one of these is about 15 to 20 years and this one is 20 years old.
Anybody have any, we have a question here?
Question. I know you just went to American Public Works Equipment Show down in Perry, Georgia. Did you see anything like this down there? Did like a demo or something that we could have maybe got cheaper or?
I, unfortunately, I was going to go, but also at the same time was a training class put on by a paving company that I went to with several of my employees. But I did send two of my employees down to the show. But prior to looking on this, I did go online and looked at, at various equipment companies that make similar products or equipment. And the only thing that I could really find that's close to this is a, like a four-wheel drive excavator that's made by CAT. The problem is, it is really, its top speed is like 15, 20 miles an hour. And it's really just a backhoe mounted on four wheels. So it doesn't, the boom doesn't extend in and out and neither does it articulate in a sideways motion. So it's really just an excavator on four wheels. So it doesn't have the ability that this one has to retract in and out. And if you notice, by having that ability, you can clean out ditches. It's really made more for that. So the only other piece of equipment made similar to this is made by Badger and the closest distributor was like two states away. So I didn't even pursue that anymore because of repairs and warranties and things like this. This is a Georgia vendor. This is a Georgia vendor. I think Tractor and Equipment's actually in, in Atlanta. So that was why I went with this piece of equipment.
Good piece of equipment. I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have any questions? Not have a resolution in your book, purchase of one Greedall and to approve a budget amendment from fund balance.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Three?
Say.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution request authorization to purchase two 2015 Ford 250 long-bed crew cab pickup trucks and one 2015 Ford 350 crew cab long-bed pickup truck and approval of a budget amendment. Yes, sir.
Chairman, it's correct. We're asking for three crew cab trucks here. The first that we're going to replace, and these are replacements, they're not additions to our fleet. The first is place asset number 5824, which was a 1999 Ford F-350 Super Duty Crew Cab that was taken out of service after being wrecked. The truck that we're replacing with is a, we're asking to replace it with is a 2015 Ford F-350 V8, a four-by-two, meaning it's a two-wheel drive, one-ton truck with a diesel engine option, the LT-245 All-Terrain tires, a crew cab long bed, dual wheels with a trailer brake controller and reverse aid sensor for a price of $34,753 from Allen Vigil Ford through a statewide contract. We did ask for the dual wheels because we'll, this truck will be pulling a trailer with a bobcat on it. We like the dual wheels in the back to give stability, the diesel engine to give enough power to, you know, to pull it without putting such a strain on the engine. It's why we asked for a 350 with diesel and dual, dual tires on the back. The second and third trucks that need replacing, the first one will replace asset number 4527, which is a 1996 F-350 Ford with 255,000 miles on it, and that's when I checked on our fuel records about two weeks ago, so it probably has a little bit more. And asset number 4810, which is a 1997 Ford F-350 with over 287,000 miles on it. Both of these trucks will be replaced with a F-250 V8, three-quarter ton crew cab truck. The options we are asking is the LT-245 All-Terrain tires, crew cab long bed, again, a trailer brake, trailer brake controller, and a reverse aid sensor for $24,138 each. The total of all three vehicles is $83,029. Be happy to answer any question you have.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I got one question for Rod. Rod, when we do these things on the state contract, do we ever take the state contract and the specs and go to local dealers? I know we got legacy Ford just less than a mile down the road here. Do we try to see if they would match the price or anything?
If we didn't utilize the contract, we'd have to do a sealed bid and open it up, open up the bids to any vendor that sells the Ford vehicle. So we couldn't just compare our contract pricing to one particular vendor. So, no, sir.
Anybody else have any further question? I yield the floor District One.
Yeah, Rod, do they have only one state contractor in the state? I mean, one dealership that does this?
No, sir. Like, just talking to Ty, he's working on maybe getting an SUV for his department. It's a different Ford dealer than Allen Vigil. So they do, they split the award obviously by brand, but there are different awards within the brand. It just so happens that for years and years, Allen Vigil has had the vast majority of Ford products on the state contract.
Okay, thank you.
I might add a little bit to that. If you'll notice that we're able to stipulate on this bid as well, just the options we want on the truck. And a lot of times when you go buy a truck, they'll come with certain packages, and they may have a lot of packages that we don't need. But, but through this, we're able to stipulate just what we need on the truck, and we don't have to buy a lot of those things that sometimes are included in some of the packages when you might buy a truck.
Anybody else have any questions? Not, we have a resolution, purchase of two 2015 Ford F-250 long-bed crew cab pickup trucks and one 2015 Ford 350 crew cab long pickup truck for a total of $83,029, and to approve a budget amendment from fund balance.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Say.
At Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. This is a transformer. Next, we have a resolution request authorization to purchase one used 2013 Warrior 800 screen plant on tracks and approval for a budget amendment.
A screen, which is what I've placed on the, on the video display here is, a screen would enable Henry County Department of Transportation to do a much better and faster job building shoulders, say, after a road is resurfaced. By screening the dirt, all the clumps, rocks, and wooded debris would be removed from the dirt instead of picking these items up after the dirt is placed. The dirt would be easier to place and provide a better finished product. Y'all may have seen, I know Commissioner Moss would be familiar with, when we built shoulders like on Old Jackson, that, that material as it comes out of the dump trucks, you know, would have a lot of clods and roots and stuff like that, which we would either have to rake or, or correct on the side of the roadway. By running the material through the screen, it would screen out all the rocks, roots, debris. So as we take it out and place it, it's like screen topsoil, it's just a better product to put along the roadways. In addition, we could use this screen to screen our waste concrete pile to remove the dirt that is mixed with it. So when it comes time to crush that concrete, we're just crushing the concrete, not a mixture of, of the concrete and dirt, which you pay for by the ton as you do it. So if you just crush the concrete, you're only paying to crush the concrete, not the dirt. So we'll end up with a much better product and more economical and do so. Also, we have used these screens, we've rented these in the past, to screen our milling pile that we use on our surface treatment. You know, that way you screen it, you're not having to crush all the material. You can screen it first and use just that material. In addition, this is a used piece of equipment, and the selling price or asking price on this was $140,000. This was a 2013, I believe, piece of equipment, does still have some warranty. A new machine like this would be in the $180,000 range. So to give you an idea why we went after a used machine in this case, we feel like this one will, will, will do us a good job for what we want to do.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Terry, what are we currently using to dress the shoulders right now?
Currently, we would take this, load this dirt up from our yard, we would haul it out, we would spread it with our shoulder widening machine, kind of a machine that we, that does that. But it's gonna, as the materials put out there, whatever's out there is what it's gonna be. So after it's spread, we run a motor grater on it, try to knock down the clumps. But a lot of times when you hit it with a motor grater, the clumps will just roll off to the, down the hill, so will any roots or rocks. So then we either have to go out there with a, like a bobcat, the rockhound on the front of it, and grind that material up, try to pick up the rocks, or pick them up by hand, or some way to accumulate that, to get that back off the road and get a decent seed bed. We hope by screening it, the shoulder widening machine will place it, minimum work with the, with either the motor grater and the handwork. Plus, it'll give us a much better appearance of this, you know, in front of, along the edge of the roadway, in front of houses is where we have our biggest issue, that people want this to look real nice in front of their houses. They don't, they don't want to leave it real rough looking. So we hope by doing this, it'll make us, enable us to do a better job as well with less labor involved in it.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Not, we have a resolution in the book, purchase one used 2013 Warrior 800 screen plant on tracks and to approve a budget amendment from fund balance. Have a motion District Four, Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. We have a resolution request authorization to purchase two 2015 International Tandem Dump Trucks and approval of a budget amendment.
Here, again, our DOT is in need of replacing two dump trucks. The first one is asset number 4976 that was wrecked and sold. The second truck that we would like to replace is a 2002 model, its asset number is 6688 with 265,309 miles on it. It has reached the end of its service life. The two replacement trucks will be equipped with hydraulics and connections on them, so in the future, if we so elect, we can put a snowplow on the front and/or a sand salt spreader on the back if we so purchase and include in the future. So, again, the thought there is to go ahead and get these trucks with the equipment and have them set up in the event of some type of storm or something. We can set these sand spreaders in the back. These are hydraulically driven, all the hydraulics and controls would come on the truck, so we wouldn't have to send them back up to, or have the shop put these items on the truck. I might add that we, we discussed which trucks were going to be replaced with fleet, with Jody. Jody went through and looked through the service record of all of our dump trucks. So we actually intended to take the truck that was in the worst shape, you know, out of service and replace it with a new one. So we did that as well in cooperation with our crew cabs, so we did with our dump trucks to make sure we're, we're taking out the truck that's in the worst condition. Again, to have 265,000 miles on a dump truck, that's a lot of, of miles in time, a lot of service that we got out of that truck, but it's, it's really time that it needs to be replaced. So we're asking to replace it.
Anybody have any comments or question?
Terry, talk to me about the snowplow that we can put on this thing. That's at a different time, we can just bolt that up, ready to go. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, you're using motor graders now?
The last event we had last year, we did exactly that. At the point in time where we thought that the snow ice or whatever could be scraped off the roads, we did put, I believe we put two motor graders in service out in doing that, which, I mean, it's something that we can do, but we were already running the sanders on the back of a dump truck. So what we were doing was running the motor grater first, come behind it with a dump truck with a sander loaded in the back of it spreading sand. Well, if we had snowplows, and again, you know, it's one of those things, do you want to purchase to use it enough? But if we had a snowplow, the truck could have plowed it out of the way and then put the sand down in the same operation. So we're trying to think a little bit ahead here, equip these dump trucks as we replace them, some of them, not all of them, with these attachments ready, so in the event we want to add a snowplow, for instance, the headlights. When you put a snowplow on a dump truck, it blocks the headlights. So what you have to do is put a kit ready in the truck to cut off those headlights and put the new ones on the snowplow. Well, if you have to do that after the fact, like here, I think it costs 180 something dollars to do that. If you do that later on, the cost is not 180 dollars, it's way above that. The same way we get in the hydraulics already there, because these snowplows require hydraulics to lift it up and then to cant the blade from side to side, so you can, you know, direct it off the roadway. To go ahead and get all these, the hydraulics placed on there now, much, much cheaper now, and you're ready in the event that you want to put these on there. So, you know, we're, we're just trying to kind of increase our ability to handle some of these events, have these trucks ready in the event we want to pursue adding the snowplows, you know, at appropriate time than we can. And we're also putting a quick disconnect on the front of these trucks, so, and all of this is in this package. So if we want to connect up to a snowplow, take us about 30 minutes, 45 minutes to do it, not four hours if you have to bolt it and do all this stuff. So it's, you know, it's, in case we want to take action, we can do it in a very efficient manner. Then, when we're through snow plowing or plowing the roads and after an event, we can disconnect them, put the dump truck in its regular, back in its regular mode of operation, whether it's hauling gravel or asphalt or whatever, you know, we may be doing hauling soil to build shoulders or whatever application we're using the dump truck in.
The reason I asked here, you know, we, the last snow event we had, you know, we used motor graders to clean the roads off, and it popped many of those reflectors in the center and damaged some of the roads on the shoulders, you could tell it dug in. So that's something maybe we want to look into just for simple maintenance on our roads, not tearing our own roads up trying to fix things. So we'll, we'll maybe need to have this talk in the future about this.
We get, we did give instructions for them to try to stay out of the, the center of the road and, and hit the RPMs, although at times it was very difficult to determine exactly where the center of the road was. That is kind of one of the things that we can try. Now, to kind of add to that a little bit, the snowplows we intend to get are 10-foot, motor grater blades were 14-foot, so a little better scenario if we end up with the snowplows, less likely, I think, to pop off the raised pavement markers in the middle.
Anybody else have any question or comment? Not, we have a resolution in the book, purchase of two 2015 International Tandem Dump Trucks and to approve a budget amendment from the fund balance. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District Three?
Say.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. If you vote no, write the same sign. Thank you.
Chairman, Board, I do appreciate y'all giving us this equipment. It will enhance our ability to serve our citizens better, so personally, thank you.
As you know, spring is approaching quickly, you know, we're gonna have right-of-way issues again. So can you explain what the scheduling will look like and how we're gonna keep the right-of-ways maintained?
Well, yes, sir. Last, I think last summer, y'all were gracious enough to give us four new tractors and four new Bushhogs to go with those. So this year, I think, coming out of the gate with newer equipment where we'll have less breakdowns, I think we'll be able to get a better handle on staying caught up. In addition, we have the one crew set up for zero-turn lawnmowers, we've added some staff on them. And two, in regards to some of these flower or the landscaped areas, we're doing some work on them during the winter, where in hopes that it won't require as much maintenance during the year, so I can leave that other crew to cutting grass more than having to go back and work on some of those landscape areas. So we're certainly gonna hit it, I think, harder this year. Having that equipment now, we'll, we'll be able to use it as soon as the grass starts growing, and hopefully not get behind, maybe we can stay caught up.
That's great. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. We have a resolution request authorization to purchase five Ford F-150s for code enforcement and approval of a budget amendment. Mr. Rod Gray, good evening.
Yes, sir, good evening. The request before you is to purchase five Ford F-150s utilizing the state contract with Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln of Morrow, Georgia, for a total cost of $103,850. Additionally, there is a request to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $103,850, transferring that amount from the general fund balance to the code enforcement line item for vehicles to provide the necessary funding for the purchase.
Anybody have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book, request for purchase of five Ford F-150s for code enforcement for the, from the budget amendment. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District One?
Say.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor of motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, we have a resolution request authorization to purchase twenty-seven Dodge Chargers for the police department and approval of a budget amendment. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I come before you tonight for the award for purchase of twenty-seven Dodge Chargers for the police department and the associated budget amendment. Please find your attached quote for the purchase of twenty-seven Dodge Chargers to meet the operational needs for fleet replacement for the police department. The recommendation is to purchase the vehicles from Aitkins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler of Winder, Georgia, based on pricing provided by the Georgia State Contract, at a total cost of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. Please consider an additional recommendation to approve a budget amendment from the general fund transferring six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents from general fund balance to the police department line item for vehicles to provide the necessary funding for this purchase. Funds are available and will be placed in the proper account pending the approval of the requested budget amendment.
Anybody have any questions or comment?
I got one. Go ahead. Chief, I see we're buying these vehicles in Winder, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, is far as service, are we going to have to take these vehicles all the way to Winder, Georgia to get them serviced?
I don't, I don't believe we have to. We can, we can go to, I think there's a Dodge up the road in Clayton. We're just buying from them because they're on the state contract. But I believe that any Dodge dealership can service these vehicles.
Is that right?
I would assume so, but I can check and verify that for you.
Anybody else have any question?
I got a question coming. Rob, you got another resolution up here. What's the difference between this one I was just handed and the one that's in my book?
Of all mistakes I could make, I inadvertently checked Hemis on these vehicles, for real.
We were about to have that discussion.
It was me that did it, and it was brought to my attention late on yesterday. And I amended the item. It is less, about a thousand dollars less per vehicle. And it was just a matter of me checking a V-eight instead of a V-six, and the price was amended to reflect that.
Gotcha. Well, a statement to my constituents and people who have the questions of should the police vehicles be replaced or not. In preparation for this evening, I have spent thirty hours in a police car in this county. I have driven our brand-new cars, or ridden, excuse me, our brand-new cars, our Crown Vics, just about everything we've got. These gentlemen do not drive their vehicles like we drive our vehicles. I was in a Crown Vic, we jumped on somebody on I-75, and I prayed for my life that we were going to get to a stop. There's, you know, when these vehicles reach a certain mileage, it's time to get new ones. And we're at that point. I think it's been, how long since we bought vehicles other than the Splot vehicles, Chief?
It's been about five or six years since we've used general funds to purchase vehicles, probably a little bit longer, actually.
And was provided by the police department, a vehicle study, which shows once the vehicles go over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, that it actually costs more to own them than it does to buy new vehicles. So at this time, I, you know, support the police department a hundred percent in getting their new vehicles. And questions I do have, the trunks, as you know, the new vehicles, there is no room for the spare tire. Are they changing that? Are we working on that? Is Dodge looking into this?
And I think I sent you a picture from the latest conference that I attended. They've deepened the rear well in the trunk, and they, they actually fit a little bit better. Then there's another surface that comes over the tire. So unfortunately, with the Crown Vic being phased out by Ford, and our two real choices were the Ford Interceptor and the Dodge Charger. They're both, they both have reduced trunk space. And we've just had to either learn how to pack more efficiently. But it is smaller, but the tire is not, like my tire, I have a Crown Vic, an '08 Crown Vic, and it's on the rear step-up of the deck. So you actually will not have, with these new vehicles, you won't have a tire. Now you would, should you have to get to your spare, unfortunately, you'd have to remove a lot of stuff from your trunk to get to it. But it is hidden. It's a hidden spare.
Okay, awesome. You also mentioned it had to be deflated. Is that still the case?
Well, it's not, it's not a total deflation. What they recommend is that you let some air out of the tire. And, you know, usually these are just stopgaps anyway. You're not going to ride around on this tire for a significant amount of time. But what they did recommend was that you could get a can of that, fix a flat, and use it to get it inflated a little bit, a little bit better level.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to mention that the citizens, they'll probably notice it's fifteen new Dodge Henry County Police Cars, and they were bought out of Splot funds. I just wanted to bring that to their attention, and these will be out of general fund.
Anybody else have a comment? We have a resolution in the book, the Board of Commissioners, request to purchase twenty-seven Dodge Chargers for the police department and associated budget amendment. So move. Have a motion District Three? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Not to beat a dead horse, but I want to mimic what Terry Mickelson said. We do appreciate, this is long overdue, and I know I have several officers from the Henry County Police Department, and they appreciate it too, so thank you.
We have a resolution question authorization to purchase six F-150s animal control and approval of a budget amendment. Good evening.
Yes, as requested, the request is to purchase six Ford F-150s utilizing the Georgia State Contract with Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln of Morrow, Georgia, at a total cost of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. There is also an additional request for a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents from the general fund balance to the animal control line item for vehicles to provide the necessary funding for the purchase. The additional five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents is for the purchase of a livestock trailer, in which pricing has been obtained through the three-quote process, and this transfer is necessary to execute the requested purchases.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Is this going to replace your entire fleet of trucks?
For animal control officers, yes, sir.
Anybody else?
A lot about average miles per vehicle, but can you discuss that with us?
We've got six, our animal control officers all drive the F-150s. Half of our fleet is well over two hundred thousand miles. We've got at least two that are pushing three hundred thousand miles. My trucks are, or our department's trucks are on the road seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And our responsibility is not just to the county, but we're one of the few, if not the only, department that has to cover county line to county line, including all four cities. So our trucks are heavily used, and they have well-reached their service line.
Any other questions? Tonight, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners, question purchase of six F-150s for animal control and associated budget amendments. Have a motion District Five? Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
I have our department. We sincerely thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request authorization to purchase four F-250s and approval of a budget amendment. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you, you have a request to purchase four F-250s to meet the operational needs of the fire department for replacement of existing vehicles. The recommendation is to purchase these vehicles from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln of Morrow, Georgia, based on the pricing provided in the Georgia State Contract. You'll also see an additional request to approve a budget amendment from the general fund transferring one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the general fund balance to the fire department's line item for the purchase of the vehicles necessary to fund this purchase. These vehicles are going to replace a two thousand Ford Crown Vic, two thousand and three Crown Vic, and two, two thousand and six Ford Expeditions. These have, these vehicles are emergency response vehicles that are located at Stations One, Stations Nine, Station Eleven, and Station Twelve. And they range in mileage from a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three to a hundred and ninety-four thousand and sixty-six miles.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Tonight, we have a motion correction. We have a resolution to book Board of Commissioners request to purchase of four F-250s for the fire department associated budget amendment. Have a motion District Three? Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for your support to this. As you heard Angie mention earlier this evening, she mentioned a budget amendment to move funds specifically for the purchase of ambulances and for fire apparatus. We would typically have brought this all to you at the same time. The need to bring the previous item before you tonight was because the model, year, manufacturer, and ordering will actually stop February twenty-seventh. So I appreciate you doing this purchase tonight as we needed it in a timely fashion. And we will be back, once we receive the bids, back from purchasing for the ambulances and for the fire trucks. Thank you.
Bidding out right now?
We're currently bidding two of each.
Two of each? What's our ETA on getting them in service? Because I know there's build time in there.
There will be some build time, and that could vary. We will see, we have an RFP out for the engine apparatus, and depending on how that comes back, we may find that there are some manufacturers that have apparatus in their build schedules already, which would allow us to purchase them more quickly if they're not already spoken for by other departments. So it's all determinant on what we get back from the bid process. Typically, it could take as long as three hundred and sixty-five days to bid one and build it from start to finish. And that's why we're hoping we'll find a manufacturer that's got some, that meet our specification, that are already in the manufacturing process.
You got, okay. And you're the Florida District One?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that Station Twelve now has an ambulance with staff, correct?
We are sta, we are staffing an ambulance down there part-time. We have enough in our budget to staff that approximately half-time. And we're doing that during our busiest times of the day, typically, which is most the busiest time of the day.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we don't have any identified specifically for that. But what we typically do with our apparatus is we typically look at areas of the county that we need to move apparatus from. So if we, if we have a piece of apparatus that may get high mileage on it or high usage on it, we may take a newer piece of apparatus from a slower move, slower-running station and move it into that. So we evaluate that on a constant basis, and so it's something that we look at all the time.
Thank you. Next, we have a Splot resolution question award of a bid for plumbing renovation at the Henry County Jail. Ron Burkhart, good evening.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. In November twenty thirteen, the voters of Henry County approved the Splot Four referendum, which included funds for the renovation at the Henry County Jail. There's a need to renovate the plumbing for sixteen showers in Pod B at the Henry County Jail. Phase one includes the plumbing renovation for three showers to determine the cost and best path forward for the remaining thirteen showers. The Purchasing Department solicited bids for the plumbing renovation for the three showers at the jail and posted bid number fifteen dash twenty-seven on the website of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Three vendors responded, and attached is the bid tabulation for the three vendors. The most responsive low bid came from Quick Action Plumbers of Ostel, Georgia, in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Splot Department is requesting authorization to use the budgeted Splot Four funds for the plumbing renovation of the three showers at the Henry County Jail.
Anybody have any questions? Tonight, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners, awarding a bid for the plumbing renovation of three showers in Henry County Jail using budgeted Splot Four funds. So move. Have a motion District One? Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Stormwater, resolution request approval of an amendment to Chapter Three dash five, Section Three dash five dash five five four C of the Henry County Code. Wade Stroud, good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As a Phase Two MS Four community, Henry County falls under the jurisdiction of the U.S. EPA, and we are monitored, and that jurisdiction is handled by the Georgia EPD. Periodically, the EPD audits our code and other things in the county. And as part of our annual reporting process, a review was done. And Georgia EPD recommends that we add a section from Title Forty, Section one twenty-two dot thirty-four, four double IC of the Code of Federal Regulations, requiring site operators to contain all waste materials on construction site to make Henry County in compliance as a Phase Two MS Four community. I'm asking you tonight to amend our Henry County Code, Chapter Three dash five, Section Three dash five dash five five four C, and add a new number sixteen to read as follows. Operators are required to control waste such as discarded building materials, concrete truck washout, chemicals, litter, and sanitary waste that may cause adverse impacts to water quality at the construction site pursuant to forty CFR Part one twenty-two dot thirty-four, four double IC. Be glad to answer any questions you may have on this.
Anybody have any questions? Tonight, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners, to amend Chapter Three dash five, Section Three dash five dash five five four Charlie of the Henry County Code. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District Three? Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Next, planning zoning, a public hearing, request for approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Section four point zero two dash zero two, Fairview Road Overlay District for the purpose of clarifying uses, structures, vested properties and character area land use map changes in the amended Section twelve dash zero two dash one-one requirements for amendments of the ULDC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. At the request of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, planning and zoning staff reviewed the Fairview Road Overlay District language pertaining to uses, structures, vested properties and character area land use map changes in Section four dot zero two dot zero two of the ULDC and ULDC Section twelve dot zero two dot eleven regarding requirements for amendments to the ULDC. This request was in part a result of respective property and business owners located within the boundaries of the Fairview Road Overlay District expressing concern regarding the provisions of the Overlay District and to also grant authority to the planning and zoning staff to initiate ULDC amendments. With that being said, planning, planning staff recommends adding specific language to Chapter Four, Section four dot zero two dot zero two, Fairview Road Overlay District, and Section twelve dot zero two dot eleven as follows. And pardon me as I place it on the overhead. As it pertains to Section four dot zero two dot zero two D two entitled Uses, staff recommends the following regarding prohibited uses. Except as permitted on the Section four oh two oh two J two, no property within the residential character area may be used for any non-residential use. As it pertains to Section four dot zero two oh two J, non-conforming uses, staff recommends the following language. vested, for vested in grandfather non-conforming uses. To avoid undue hardship, the lawful and non-conforming use of any, of any structure or land at the time of the enactment of this overlay or any subsequent amendment may be continued, even though the use does not conform to the provisions of this overlay, except that the, that the non-conforming use shall not be changed to another non-conforming use, should not be reestablished after abandonment or removal from the property for more than fifteen days in the case of a non-conforming manufactured home, or its abandonment for six months or more than, or more for, or more for all other uses. I'm sorry, forgive me for that. Unless the premises are under a continuing lease but are unoccupied by the non-conforming use, regardless of the intent of the owner or occupier to resume the non-conforming use, shall not be extended to occupy any area of land not contained within the current lot of record, shall not be extended into any new building or structure unless such new building or... new building or structure is connected to existing buildings or structures and is contained wholly within the land currently utilized for the non-conforming use. If any existing use was lawfully established in a zoning district that is subsequently amended to require conditional use approval for such use, the existing use shall not require a conditional use permit. Any intended but not yet existing non-conforming use for which a vested right was acquired prior to the adoption of this overlay or the adoption of an amendment to it shall be prohibited unless such intended non-conforming use for which a vested right was acquired is actually commenced within one year of the adoption of this overlay district or the adoption of an amendment to it regardless of the intent or expectation to commence or abandon such non-conforming use. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, the vested grandfather status created herein may be transferred to assigned and assigned to a new owner of the real property for which such rights apply, provided, however, that the new owner, in order to avail himself of such rights, must put the property to the vested grandfathered use within six months of the date of the sale of the real property. As it pertains to Section four oh-two oh-two M, character area land use map changes, Staff recommends the following. Any property owner may apply for an amendment to the Henry County Fairview Road Overlay map. Amendments may request expansion of a character area, a change in character designation, or removal from the overlay. Applications for amendments shall be processed in accordance with Section twelve oh-two oh-nine, which is the requirements for amending the official zoning map, which is a rezoning. This will require these requests to go to the Zoning Advisory Board and then to the BLC.
This is going to be unique. We have today, we was put on notice by Andrew J. Welch III of intent or potential constitutional claims. It appears he is advising us that his law firm represents Copart of Connecticut. Now, I know there's been some communication between the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me for interrupting. There's a few more items I need to go on record and state regarding this amendment.
Okay. You just recommended what you just read, so now you've got some other recommendations.
No, sir. There was one more, and it's on the overhead.
All right. I got it right here. Go ahead.
Finally, Staff recommends the following amendment to Section four oh-two oh-two M, I'm sorry, Sections twelve oh-two eleven, requiring requirements for amendments to the ULDC as follows. This ULDC may be amended by the Board of Commissioners on its own motion or by the initiation of Planning and Zoning Staff. Otherwise, a complete application package shall be required as described in the ULDC. And the requested amendment will have no effect on the comprehensive plan. The requested amendment will have a direct impact on the character and quality of development within the Fairview Road Overlay District in that the requested amendment will provide assurances to vested property and business owners that existing uses established prior to the adoption of the overlay will be protected and permitted by the provisions of the Overlay District. The requested amendment will have little to no impact on the provisions of infrastructure and improvements, and the merits of the proposed amendment will support the land use policies of our comprehensive plan that encourage the use of landscaping, signage, building design standards, and underground utilities to add value to our community as well as gateways and corridors that create a sense of place for our community. With that being said, the Zoning Advisory Board recommended approval.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think an overview of the process that citizens went through in order to establish the overlay. You just mentioned that it was created to set standards in our community, to regulate the type of businesses that come into our community, such as junkyards, pawn shops, landfills, that gives the community some control on how they want our community to look. I know Sherry worked diligently with a number of citizens, and some of those citizens are here today, on designing this overlay. Everyone was open to participate. Many citizens came one week, didn't come the next, but there was a core group of citizens that worked hard, that truly cared about this community and truly cared how they wanted this business corridor to look. There are certain areas, and I can tell you, one thirty-eight and forty-two. When Copart came into this community five and a half years ago or so, I couldn't understand why the Board of Commissioners allowed them into the middle of a residential community. There are half-million dollar homes around this junkyard, and if we allow this to continue in this county, this can happen to anybody. Anybody that lives across the street from a large plot, a large track of land, you know, can stand to have a Copart in their community. So to have these type of standards in place, these type of zonings, it prevents this type of thing from happening in this county ever again. What I would like to do at this time, if it's okay with the Board, is to allow Sherry to give an overview of the process, since she participated in the process, and how long the process was, and what came out of the overlay meetings.
Commissioner Holmes has indicated quite a bit of time and effort went into the establishment and then the final adoption of the Fairview Overlay District. When we began the process about a year and a half ago, the idea of creating the overlay was to do away with what was currently in process or in place in terms of the type of uses, the type of zonings, and the type of what uses what the citizens want to see in that area. So there were a number of meetings that were held. There was a stakeholders committee that was assembled. The stakeholders were the residents of the Fairview community. They were the business owners, the individuals who lived along the corridor, and the individuals who would be impacted by whatever uses were decided for that area. There were two or three public meetings, or two or three town hall meetings, that were standing room only, and I think during that meeting, staff took away, and the consultants took away, one common vision, that the residents of the area wanted to see something different. They certainly did not want to run away the businesses that were there, but they wanted to make sure that those businesses continued in the same manner in which they envisioned for the area. So again, there were several meetings held, lots of comments were received, long, long meetings where we sat in a room and went through a list of uses that were allowed under the C one, C two, and C three, and allowed the residents an opportunity to make a decision on whether they wanted those uses in the area. This overlay was adopted by the Board on last year, and we are coming to you all simply because we felt that there weren't any teeth in protecting the property owners who were currently there. So the only reason we're coming back is because we felt that the language as it was previously written for vested properties did not protect those property owners. It certainly was not the desire of staff to come back because we recently approved this overlay district and certainly don't want that to be the practice, that we do come back every time we need to make a change to it. Again, I think that the end result is that the residents wanted to see professionalism in the area. They wanted to see office uses. They do want to see commercial uses, but it's interesting, the residents of the Fairview community, they want to be the premier community. That was clear. That was one thing that they expressed to the staff. We went back and forth on whether they wanted a gas station, and I think I finally convinced them, okay, yeah, let's do a gas station, but they have some high standards for the area. So it was not a closed-door process. Again, there were probably over a hundred residents that attended every meeting, and I think a majority of the residents there concur that what they envisioned for the area is what we presented to you all when you all adopted it. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Chair, when we voted on this overlay, we allowed people to the opportunity to opt out if they chose to. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is through any process. Any property owner inside or outside of an overlay district has the ability to apply to the Zoning Advisory Board to be removed from an activity center or to have their land use category changed. So that is still an option that is available.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Patrick, do you have any comments at this point?
Well, no. I've had several discussions with Mr. Randy Welch, who represents Copart. At one point, we thought we had some language worked out that would satisfy everybody. I'm not sure that that language is now acceptable to the Board, so my suggestion would be open it for public comment, allow Mr. Welch or anyone else who wants to speak, speak, and then the Board vote its pleasure.
I'm going to open the floor in two segments. One, fifteen minutes for the amendment to the ordinance, and fifteen minutes against the ordinance. So what I'll do, I'll open the floor up now for fifteen minutes, if you would. This would be for the passage, the amendment of the ordinance, and if you would, you only get fifteen-minute total time for the group, so if you would, come to the podium, state your name for the record, and the clock will start.
Houston Nelson, City of Stockbridge. Good evening, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairman Smith and Commissioners. I'm here tonight in favor of what is arguably a compromise between Copart and the Commissioner and citizens of District Five. Just for my own purient interest, I'm just curious, how many people here are from Ola, the Ola area of the county? Any? Nobody here from Ola? I see one, two, okay, three. I'll tell you why that's important. I had a chance to go to Commissioner Barm's town hall meeting at Ola Elementary School, and the similarities between what's happening in Ola and what we saw on the Board here are striking. I saw a community that felt like they had no voice. I saw a community that felt frustrated because of the overbuilding that has come to this area. I saw Mr. Welch's father there as representing the interests of the builder, who's a local guy, and just trying to make a living for his family. But there was a lot of frustration in that room because there's definitely a distinction between the residents that have lived here all their life, and I think most of you gentlemen would fall in that category. Henry County's changed quite a bit since you guys were kids, okay? And the decisions that you have to make now were not necessarily problems that were created by you. They were problems that were created by some of your predecessors. And so, as I was listening to that meeting, I saw the frustration was coming out, and they were actually, and she did a good job, Ms. Sherry, I felt so bad for you at that meeting, you and Dante. I really wanted to get up and say something to protect them, but she's a grown woman. She can hold her own, because it wasn't her fault either. She wasn't the one making the decisions regarding what was happening with that new development. Again, these decisions happened long before even Commissioner Barm took office, so I'm just here tonight to bring attention to the fact that the residents of the Fairview area and Ola share common interests in that they're both Henry County. We both live here. I love Henry County. I really do. I'm not native like you are, but I love Henry County. This gentleman, what was his name, Vince, that got up here, I love that country twang he had. I love that. I love our Commissioner. I love our new county manager. I like everybody. I even like Andy. Andy knows I like him. He's going to speak in opposition here in just a minute, but we can disagree but still be friends. We want a better community, and the interesting thing about me being here is that I don't live in either of these communities. I don't live in Ola, and I don't live in Fairview. But the reason I'm here tonight, gentlemen, is because, as the Commissioner said earlier, it's quite possible that what's happening here in Fairview and Ola can happen in my neck of the woods, and so I want to be in solidarity with my brothers and sisters in the Fairview area that want a quality of life and a standard for how their community is going to look for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, as well as my brothers and sisters that live in Ola that want it to be more rural, that want large lots. If you have less than three acres, they don't want you down there, and I can appreciate that. So the one criticism I saw on both ends is that, from a Commissioner's standpoint, please just take this to heart, we don't do a good enough job of communicating with the community of these critical meetings. Sherry just mentioned that there were a hundred in attendance at each of these meetings. I guarantee you, if they had been communicated better, there would have been more than that, not enough room to even hold the people, because people are still finding out about what's going on up in Fairview, and they live there, about these meetings. They cannot believe that an individual business would want to, so to speak, wreck what that community is doing. They have an option now to opt out and continue in a grandfathered clause to be able to operate their business as usual without expanding. They have part of their lot, if I'm not mistaken, that they're not even using all of it, so I don't really understand what the issue is. Use the existing property that you have to its fullest capacity, and don't upset the surrounding area, because obviously, they want quality, just like the citizens in Ola want. They don't want too many people on the roads because it's too congested, the infrastructure there, and that's what we're talking about, gentlemen, infrastructure that has been neglected for years is buckling under the weight of the population of Henry County. And so now you see the citizens of Fairview binding together and making a case in an organized manner, peaceful, respectful, and they're saying to you, please help us get a hold of this issue. And likewise, I'll be here supporting you, Commissioner Barm, with the efforts that are going on in Ola, do the same thing, to preserve the quality of life in Ola. I remember hearing a gentleman that said, he lives in Ola, it used to take him twenty minutes to get to work. Now it takes him an hour and ten minutes. Remember that, gentlemen? Yes. My heart went out to him. I can't even imagine that kind of commute. And likewise, the citizens in the Fairview area simply want a road widened, they want standards in the building structure, they want the businesses and residents to all conform to the ideal of a better community. I'm going to leave you with this, because I've probably taken too much time already. So check this out. When I was coming up as a young salesperson, sometimes I would do my best to sell the product I was selling, and I just, I wouldn't make the sale, and I did everything I thought I could know how to do. And my old supervisor used to tell me this. He said, you know, when your best isn't good enough, that's what he used to say, when your best isn't good enough, then just do what's required. So I know there's a lot of competing interests. I know that it's going to be interesting to see what my good friend Andy is going to come up here and say, representing Copart, the entity that apparently doesn't want to not only conform to the community standard, but also doesn't want to agree to a compromise. I know that's a bad word, compromise, but I thought the compromise was more than fair. But, gentlemen, I'm going to leave you with this. When your best isn't good enough, just do what's required. What's required, gentlemen? This is what's required. And if you're like me and you were raised in church, you know this verse. It's from Micah in the Old Testament, Chapter Six, Verse Eight. "He hath show thee, O man, what is good; and what doth the Lord require of thee, but to do justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with thy God?" I'm asking you, gentlemen, tonight, do what is just. This compromise, the staff recommendation, all the hard work that this community has put into this, and what I see in Ola, because that's going to be the next item on your agenda, do what is just, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, fellow Commissioners, and Sherry as well. And the reason I say good evening, Sherry, and by the way, my name is Richard Sylvia, and I actually sat on the Overlay District Committee relative to Fairview, and wanted to ensure that everybody really understood the voice of the community. So when they said we had at least a hundred people out, we would have had more if we had the right communication in place, and I don't want to knock that piece there. However, I do want to commend the work that was done. I was part of that committee. We just want standards, so we're not trying to get rid of Copart. So I think that there's some type of misunderstanding relative to their existence in the neighborhood. We just don't want them to expand. So we're not trying to get rid of Copart. So I, I think that there's an, some type of misunderstanding relative to their existence in the neighborhood. We just don't want them to expand. We don't want more Coparts in our neighborhood. We don't want any liquor stores in our neighborhood. We don't want any junkyards in our neighborhood. We don't want any pawn shops in our neighborhood. We want to have a community that mimics the communities in Sandy Springs, that mimics the communities near the Dunwoody area, that looks like Alpharetta, that looks like Roswell. Right? We don't, we don't want an area in my mind that looks like what I see over in East Point or parts of College Park. That's not why we moved to Henry County. We moved to Henry County because we thought that we had an opportunity to build a community that we could raise our kids in and be proud of. I'm going to have a challenge if you guys decide tonight that you're going to overrule what the community said we wanted. So I had an opportunity to speak the last time that I was here. And sir, I'm going to make sure that I don't run over. So you get an opportunity to come up and, and speak, right? And actually, I want to commend the gentleman that was just speaking. I didn't catch your name. But the fact that we're hearing from residents that don't even live in our community, that support us, should speak volumes. And it's letting you guys know that we want to make Henry County the best county possible. Not just that Fairview area. So I need to make it my business to make sure that I reach out to my neighbors and, and those within our surrounding community to support other areas like yours as well, right? So I appreciate you coming out and, and supporting us. Last but not least, I just want to say that we need to make sure that we follow what the people want and not necessarily what one or two individuals want. We're not trying to get rid of Copart, but they need to abide by the standards that we've determined that we want in our neighborhood. Which means that they should not be able to expand. If they have unused land, let them use that land. But don't let them expand beyond that because now you're expanding beyond the borders in which we want people to, from a commercial perspective, if they're not going to uphold the standards that we, the community, have decided that we want to live within. And at that juncture, I, I rest my case and say goodnight, but thank you very much for your time. And please make sure we do the right thing here.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Keith Pevy. I live at ninety Bel Air Drive. I'm a Henry County resident as well. I'm also an environmental health and safety manager and a hazmat instructor. I do agree with the overlay that they did a great job on. I do not think that Henry County needs to expand a junkyard. Not only because of the hazardous materials that's there, also because of a lot of EPA standards that the county would be on the hook should they decide to leave. And that's the taxpayers. I do also believe that we are trying to get better schools, better systems, better places for us to go and to live and to go and, and guess, have a good time. You know, I don't want to, I live, I've been here about ten years now. I just got here from New York, just flew in not too long ago. Because as I said before, as they said, we don't know what's going on. We have no idea a lot of times. And because I'm out of the state, thankfully I do have my people in Henry County who are very, very, called me up and say, hey, this is not going to work. So I am here to say is that I do appreciate them coming out as citizens of Henry County to support the overlay. And for people like me who may not have a voice because I'm out of the specific area, but when I am home, then I do want to make sure that our county is protected. Should they decide to try and, I hope you all stay with what your decision is for the overlay and not try to change that because that is going to be a very serious issue with them trying to grow beyond their boundaries. And there are some EPA standards which the county could be on hook if they should decide to do that. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I know I got one minute and thirty seconds. I'll be quickly. My name is Raymond Davis. I live at one hundred Leaning Cypress Way. I just moved to Henry County about a year ago. Now, the issue I have is I'm real estate, you do, do as BPOs. If anybody knows what a BPO is, it's an appraisal. The first thing they ask you when you do an appraisal is what is negative around that area? Well, if you allow them to expand that, it's going to be a negative impact on our community. Because anybody knows to do an appraisal for a bank, when you look at value, you got to take into consideration what is negative. Now, they got a lot of land already up there and they're not using it. You've got other junkyard areas in this, in this community that they can always buy land near. For example, off forty-two. If you go to Fayetteville, all the junkyards are in the same area that are large and big and they're not surrounded by houses. Now, you got two hundred thousand dollar houses across the street from there and you got a hundred and ninety, a hundred, two hundred thousand. Everybody's excited about the increase in tax revenue. Well, by expanding that and letting them expand it, it decreases our values. We moved to Henry County because we like high standards.
Thank you. Next, I'll open the floor up fifteen minutes for people that would like to oppose this amendment.
Good evening Members of the Board. My name is Andy Welch. I represent Copart. They, Copart is a property owner of over seventy acres, nearly eighty acres in the Fairview overlay. We have submitted and filed an application to withdraw the property from the overlay district. That is a right given to each and every property owner pursuant to the overlay ordinance, in particular, subparagraph M. one. In that, it sets forth no standards by which you would adjudicate whether to allow or not allow, and thereby giving the property owners a right to seek permission from the Board of Commissioners to be removed from the district. We have an application pending. We filed that application before this amendment was ever drafted. Not only that, we filed the application, we've gone through the ZAB. The ZAB has recommended approval of our request to be removed from the district. In the interim, after that approval, I started hearing discussions about a possible amendment to the overlay district that might address my client's concerns. And since that time, which was back in December, I have been working with staff to try and derive some language that would work in terms of protecting our clients' rights and the property owners' rights in that area, pre-existing property owners, those that have been there. Not people that have moved in recently, people that have been there in that area and have established their rights. Copart's is a taxpayer. And I've heard some, this language thrown around about calling it a junkyard. Well, everybody can have their own definition of what a junkyard is, but I just want to be clear as to what they do and what they do not do. Copart owns that acreage. It was a junkyard for all kinds of cars and whatnot that would be parked on the facilities, it dismembered and sold off. What Copart does with the property is they put in over four million dollars worth of gravel to resurface that entire area, clean the entire junkyard up off of all materials that was there. They did that, put the gravel down. They have erected a screening so you can't see into the facility unless you're at the front gate. And in addition to that, what they actually do is they bring in a car that's been in an accident. The insurance company sells that car to Copart. Copart brings the vehicle in, stores it on that site until it is auctioned off online to someone else who wants the entire car, not pieces of the car, the entire car. The entire car is then loaded and moved off-site to the buyer. This is a temporary storage facility for those wrecked vehicles until they are sold in the marketplace. That is all it is. There's no dismembering of the vehicles. There's no treatment. There are no hazardous materials as defined by EPD or EPA. There are just simply cars. If you've been in an auto accident, your car was probably totaled out. If it was totaled out, it was then sold to one of these kinds of holders, like Copart, and then sold off. Our request has never been to expand the use of the property beyond its current boundaries. So to those people that have said that tonight, that's never been the request. The request has simply been removed from the overlay as a matter of right. In an effort to preserve the community's wishes and in an effort to be respectful to the Commissioner of that district, we've also said, well, let's talk about a compromise in terms of the vested rights that each and every property owner has within the overlay district, including Copart. That request has been to simply modify some of the rights and allow them some certain abilities to use their property. As we've heard from Mr. Richard Silva tonight, who was on the board that heard all these, these requests in public hearings, he said that he's not trying to get Copart's, to get rid of Copart's. Just not wants, they just doesn't want them to expand. Copart doesn't disagree with that. We're not seeking to expand off of the property. We're seeking to use the property that Copart owns and pays taxes for and has. And mind you, this junkyard that was there, the junkyard that was there before Copart's purchased it and turned it into this storage facility, that's been there for almost thirty years. So the, the manufacturing use, the zoned use of this property has been there for about three decades. They're continuing to use that, but they're using it for the limited purpose I described before. If the citizens, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll finish. If the citizens wish to remove the property, wish to remove Copart's from the area, which I haven't heard that from anybody that's spoken, what I heard was they're not trying to get rid of Copart's. Just don't want it to expand off the property. We agree. We don't want to expand either. We don't have any intentions of expanding either. We just want to use our property for the purposes for which we bought it and which we have invested significant money on. Number two, there's a discussion about needing to agree to a compromise. Mr. Nelson, that's all we've been doing. That's what we've been doing for the past two months, is trying to work out a compromise to stay within the overlay district with some latitude to continue the use in an appropriate manner and in a businesslike manner and in a professional manner, consider it to the community. We've also heard from, we also heard this concept of justice. Where's the justice if you adopt a law that says you may remove yourself from an overlay district if you make application? And then we're told, we're not going to hear your application. It's not going to come up to the board. It's going to be put on hold until you compromise on some amendment. Where's the fairness in that? Where's the justice in telling someone who's invested millions of dollars in property, pays property taxes, has an asset, employs people here in Henry County, and then you're told, no, you're a junkyard and we want to get, we, we want you to stop what you're doing and we're not going to compensate you for that. We just want you to cease to exist. Where's the justice in people that lived here for decades, invested their home life savings in it, that have lived around this facility for years without, with, but one complaint? And that was the headlights coming out of the entrance. Where is the justice in all that? Where's, where's the justice to the property owners? If we're entitled to be removed from the property, then that application should be heard by this board and voted on. And then we'll be out of it, won't be bothering the overlay any longer. Our proposal has simply been to try to work with the Commissioner. And in fact, just last night, I sent to the Commissioner a proposed language that would change one of those things. And Dante, I don't, if you could bring the, the amendment back up. All we've asked for in the email that I sent to the board members and to the attorney and, and to Commissioner Holmes last night was to, was this effect. Two, two D says as written that you cannot expand the building or structure. You can't add a new building or structure unless you add it on to an existing structure. The way that's worded, and, and I was trying to be helpful in terms of pointing out a problem that I see for you, and that is simply this. If you're allowed to add on to a structure, someone could just keep building on to an existing structure and bypass what I think the Commissioner's intent is and what the people's intent is, which is for some uniform structures, some appearances, some beautification of the, of the roadways, businesses that are employing people locally and not forcing people to drive long distances, having that great appearance, that Sandy Springs appearance that people want. But that language would allow someone to add on to an existing shack and just keep on going. And so my suggestion was that you actually put in some percentage cap. And I, and I suggested three percent of the lot area. So that way, someone could add on, but they could only add on to a certain point. And then they'd have to make, make anything else conform to the new ordinance. In addition to that, I asked to be allowed to put up new structures that are not associated with an existing structure, but entirely, entirely new building or structure. It too would be subject to the same three percent building coverage area cap. That way, someone who has a residence there that wants to add on an in-law suite, either attached or unattached, could do so. I thought these were all very reasonable compromises. And when we spoke last night, Mr. Commissioner, I understood that that was a reasonable compromise. But I'm not seeing that language here tonight. And I would respectfully request that that language be added. In all other respects, Mr. Commissioner and members of the board, we can live within these, with these vested rights if they're changed to add that three percent cap that we're requesting for new structures that are independent of an existing structure, structure. I have the language here. I'm happy to read it into the record if you would like me to, Mr. Chairman, and, and share that with you. I'm also available to answer questions.
Andy, I think the only rub here is that we're talking about expanding the structure outside of the existing, existing structure. I'm okay with the three percent. But what I'm having an issue with is having Copart, which is a junkyard, I'm sorry, it is junk. If you have junk, junk cars on the back of a truck that's dropping bumpers and tires into the middle of the street, that's junk. And that's junk that's coming to our community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Anybody that stands on, on Fairview Road, you can see hundreds of trucks riding down the street with drunk, junk vehicles on it. So it is a junkyard. However, I'm in agreement with you in terms of allowing existing structures to add on, up to three percent. The issue I'm having is the detached structures. We don't want to build a, a subdivision inside a junkyard community. That's the only issue I have, and I'm pretty sure that my constituents have an issue with that as well. But as far as moving forward, allowing them some flexibility on their own property, I'm fine with that. And putting that cap of three percent on, I'm fine with that. But it's, it's that additional structure that's the rub for me.
Well, last night we spoke about that. I sent you the language with the expressed language that said this would be for a new existing structure, I mean for a new structure. And I was told by you that that was acceptable.
Well, what I told you, what I told you was, I, I got the email. I had to check with Patrick if it's the same. It was the same language that I talked to Patrick discussed a few days ago. I would be okay with it, but it was a little bit different in terms of how it was worded. So the issue-
That's not what you told me last night.
The issue here is existing structure versus detached structure. That's the, that's the only issue I have.
And the language I sent you was highlighted in yellow that specifically said existing detached structure, a separate new structure.
But when we talk, I specifically said, Andy, I haven't had a, I've been in meetings already. I haven't had a chance to read it. Let me follow up with you tomorrow. I'll let you know. And then I had Patrick, talked to Patrick today and Dante. They have, Dante has some issues with the language. Talked to Sherry. She has some issues with the language. And so that, that's why we're here today.
Well, the request for tonight was I was trying to solve a problem with your own ordinance language as a courtesy to the board and as a citizen here in Henry County. Also as a courtesy to the, to the members of the overlay, people that worked on the overlay district. Because the way it's worded would allow for unfettered expansion of an existing structure. That is not our issue. Had I not raised it, I could have just been silent. And I could have said nothing about it. I could have not done what I thought was the right thing to do for Henry County and for the overlay district and said nothing. Which means that had I said nothing, you would adopt this tonight and then- Which means that had I said nothing, you would adopt this tonight and then my client would just simply come in and build on to an existing structure that's there and expand infinitum over the, over the surface of the property. That's not what you want. I was trying to be courteous and respectful in that regard. My request is that there be a three percent coverage limit put in for any new building added to the property. Anything beyond that would have to conform with your overlay ordinance. That's the request that I've made. Ms. Chairman, I have the language that was sent to me earlier today that was represented to me as being drafted by staff and that was acceptable. And I can read that into the record, which I'll, I'll do at the appropriate time.
Before you read it, Andy, you mentioned one thing regarding, what was that, matter of fact, let's just do this. Patrick, give me your thoughts on, on the language that Andy proposed.
Well, the difference is really one minor difference. It's whether or not an improvement, whether or not a new structure has to be attached to an existing structure or not. That's really, that's really the issue for the board to decide. Now, to the extent I have a personal feeling about it, I don't, I don't have a vote. My job is to defend whatever vote you guys make. But in the big scheme of things, in the, in the number of pages that this overlay district encompasses, in my mind, that's a fairly small issue. It's a fairly small issue both ways. I think the, the harm to the intent and the application of the overlay district, whether or not you include, whether or not you allow freestanding buildings or require them to be attached, is pretty minimal. Frankly, I think the impact on the property owner as to whether or not it can be a freestanding building or attached to an existing building is pretty minimal. It seems to me, as important as these issues are, that this one discrepancy is really not that big of an issue, I don't think. I mean, it's, if somebody can add a three thousand square foot building to an existing building, or whether they can add a three thousand square foot freestanding building, doesn't seem like a big difference in my mind. It's ultimately what the board wishes to do. We have language, we can have language available either way. We can, I mean, it's a matter of, in fact Dante's probably already scratched something out, so.
Before you, before you begin Dante, I want to address the, the expansion. Copart did meet with Sherri and expressed a desire to expand on the property next to the, their, their current junkyard that they have. So they, so, and they have, they, they do have a desire to expand. And the reason why they want to opt out and build a structure on the other side of their current property is so they can set, so they can set it up to expand over to Flakes Mill Road. Sherri, you want to address that meeting that you had with Copart?
About, I guess it was eight months ago, nine months ago, I think I was still the planning and zoning director at that time. Copart had met with our SLOs department, I believe, if I recall correctly, and showed up in the planning and zoning office and wanted to get some direction on acquiring a second parcel of land for expansion purposes. At that time, myself and I think there was one other planner in the meeting with me, we indicated that the future land use map did not support them adding an additional M1 or M2 use to the property, given that the property was residential and given that the future land use map designated that property for low-density residential. I think, and again, this was eight or nine months ago, it may have been twelve months ago, that Copart's biggest concern was they were receiving a lot of complaints from the residents along Flakes Mill Road, and they were looking to change the location of where trucks were actually coming in, which was what triggered their, their need to expand. And again, that was eight, twelve months ago, and I'm really just speaking off the cuff, but that is the information that was relayed to me.
Sherri, I don't, I don't disagree with what you said because that's exactly what Copart's told me and the commissioner was talking with another commissioner, so I don't know if you heard that last part of your statement because that's actually very critical. The request that Copart's made to you was to look for an alternative location for the entrance and to remove it from where it currently is located and put it at a different place. That was the only reason for expansion. And my understanding is that commissioner was met with and discussed this in terms of trying to look for a different entrance. That's the only discussion about expansion. But not expanding in terms of, you know, trying to add more land for the purposes of expanding their practice, just relocate the entrance. So to that extent, that's correct, but it was actually done in a manner to try and offset community, community concerns about the, the entrance. But what I'm saying tonight is that, that if the, if the amendments can be made that I'm asking for to the proposed amendment that's before you, the board, that would allow for that three percent coverage area for a new structure, then, and my clients told me that they don't have any interest in withdrawing. They, they can live within these rules and operate within these rules, which would then accomplish the community's goal of not having them expand. The unfortunate, the reality though is that if they are allowed to leave the overlay, then the property, then their ability to expand is no longer limited except by your future zoning map and any zoning decisions, which is the case now anyway. And that was the point you were making earlier, that the future land use map doesn't call for any expansion of M1 in the area. They would like to stay in the, in the overlay provided that they can get that amendment so they can put a new structure there. And I think the request is fairly reasonable. It may not matter to other folks, but it clearly matters to my client, otherwise I wouldn't be here tonight.
So basically what you're saying, I have a commitment from you that if we were able to go with the language that you're proposing, that we won't have any issues with Copart opting out of overlay?
Yeah, yes, sir. If, if the board will adopt the language that I'm asking for, then I will promptly withdraw the application tomorrow.
Well, can you read the language and also add into?
I was waiting for a time to intervene.
Let me, let me finish what I'm saying, Chairman, sorry. If you can, if you can read, read it into the record and also state in the record that they will no longer try to opt out the overlay, we can move forward with a motion.
Okay, I've, I've said, I'll read the language in the record, but this will be the third time that I've said that Copart's wishes to be a part of the district, but they just need that change. These amendments and the change I'm asking for tonight would satisfy them. And like I said, tomorrow I'll withdraw the application. So the language is this. The preferred language that we had sent earlier is that subparagraph D would read, shall not be extended into any new building or structure unless such new building or structure is connected to existing buildings or structures and is contained wholly within the land currently utilized for the non-conforming use, semicolon, however, comma, where a new building or structure is not to be attached to an existing building or structure, comma. The non-conforming use may be extended into such new building, structure, provide, new building or structure provided that any such new building or structure has a coverage area which does not exceed three percent of the total square footage of the lot and is contained wholly within the land currently utilized for the non-conforming use.
With that, I would like to make a motion.
Not in order right now, we've got to get through with the public hearing part. So we got, we got four minutes and ten minutes, four minutes and ten seconds left, if anybody would like to be heard. And this would be against the amendment of the ordinance. State your name, please.
My name is Lynn Bellamy Mitchell. I am a resident of Henry County. I do live in the McDonough area, but along with family members, I own, family members and I together, or separately, own ten parcels in the Fairview area. Four of them are residential. Several of the, four of them are also, are commercial, but that they're new commercial, there's no building on them at this point. The other two parcels were the two parcels that Henry County had offered to purchase from my, my siblings, my cousins and myself. And we went to great expense, you know, to, to work towards doing that. And we also asked our tenants to be, to leave the property forfeiting six thousand dollars a month in income. And one thing that I'd failed to mention at the last meeting, when we were in negotiations with the county, we had an offer from McDonald's to buy a portion of the property and we were told that you guys would not continue the negotiations with us, with us selling part of it to McDonald's. So, you know, we have already been hurt greatly financially with what the county has been doing in that area. And now we come to the overlay. Our property is in the overlay. We do want to maintain the, I mean, to retain our right to opt out, should we so desire. And I have a, a big concern with the amendment as proposed by Mr. Gibbs. However, I'm fine with it as amended again by Mr. Welch, because we had a building on that property, an office building, that was no longer, would not, would not meet the ADA requirements. We tore that building down, it was an office building. We also tore down two other shed-type buildings, which improved the looks of that property, improved it in the area. We have a remaining structure, it's a seven thousand square foot shop building, it's a concrete building, and it was used as a shop and has been, been used as a shop until we had to get rid of our tenants. If we have another tenant who wishes to have an office building, we would like to have the opportunity for it to be built in a separate area, which like I say, now I think we're going to be able to do that. But, you know, I think it would be much more conducive to having the, the shop separated from an office. And I just wanted to, to say that. And it seems to me that everybody is keying in on Copart, and there are a lot of other commercial properties in that area. And I think we're trying to restrict everything, thinking we can restrict Copart, and I think you're putting unnecessary burdens on the remaining commercial entities in order to do that. And I, I just would like for you, again, to be just and to look at the, the whole picture and not just focus in on one, one business that you're having problems accepting. Thank you.
You've got fifty seconds left. Anybody like to divorce their opinion, oppose this? I see no one standing or speaking. I'm going to determine and declare that the public hearing portion has expired. Now I'll open the floor up for the board to take whatever actions they deem necessary and for discussions.
The language that Mr. Welch read into, read into the resolution.
You put that in the form of a motion with an amendment, or are you just discussing? Okay, we have, we have a motion to amend Section D of what I'm seeing here and up here.
Correct.
We have a motion, we have a second, have a second. Mr. Gibbs, would you be so kind as to, I'm going to explain this piece of paper here. I cut mine out because it was privileged information with other things. So I want you to, could you put this on the, on the, on the scope under there? We're now discussing this issue. If I'm not mistaken, that language right there is the new language. And the little piece of paper I gave Mr. Gibbs was the fact that in the last several days and throughout the day, I have reviewed this half-inch document, and I was told and led to believe that if that language is adopted, then the whole issue is resolved. And for that reason, I would vote for this. And when this thing first come down, I voted against because I didn't feel like it, you should force somebody to do something. But having said that, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion or comments? If not, all in favor of the amended motion, the ordinance, resolution and ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Section 402-02, Fairview Road Overlay District for the Purpose of Clarifying Uses, Structures, Vested Property and Character Area Land Use Map Changes and to amend Section 12.02 as described and submitted by District Four in the motion. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so moved, thank you. Next, we're going to have the Assistant County Manager, Resolution Request to Award of an RFQ for Professional Services for the Joint Henry County City Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Ms. Matthews, good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. As Chairman Smith has indicated, I have a resolution before you this evening to award the RFQ, which is Request for Qualifications for Professional Services for our Joint Henry County City's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. As you all, or some of you all, may recall, we adopted our first ever CTP in 2007, and we are set to update that plan in the coming months. The staff report, the executive summary and the resolution outlines the process that took place as far as determining who the selected vendor would be. And I am here tonight seeking approval from you all to award the update to our Joint Henry County City's Comprehensive Transportation Plan in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Jacobs. Just for your purposes, the funds that will be utilized for the CTP will be a joint effort between the county and the four cities. I already have confirmation approvals from the four cities as far as their contribution amount. I don't know if you all recall, but this is actually a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we received from the Atlanta Regional Commission, and then we will match it with twenty percent at one twenty-five. So the county's contribution will be a little over eighty-eight thousand dollars, and then the balance of that one twenty-five will be paid for by the four cities. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, we have a resolution to award an RFQ for the Professional Services for the Joint Henry County City's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So moved. Have a motion District One, second District Five, and further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Let's move right along, approval of December sixteenth, twenty fourteen minutes. If somebody moved with, approve those minutes as published.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second from District One, in further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Do we have any commissions like to make any comments at this time?
I have one, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'd just like to invite everybody, I've got a town hall meeting February the twenty-eighth at Locust Grove Rec Center from nine till eleven. The agenda will be finance and public safety, so please come, learn a little bit more about public safety and finance. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. District Four?
This is actually to my constituents. At the intersection of Crumbly Road and 155, we have some severe issues with people cutting through the bank. Please be neighborly. That's private property, we're, we're having trouble policing it. I'm working on trying to find a solution, so be patient with me, we'll, we'll get there eventually. The next thing I want to talk to my constituents about, the East Lake Extension. I am looking for a civic organization or some kind of Boy Scouts or something of this nature to help with the litter pickup on the East Lake Extension. I don't know what's going on with the East Lake Extension, but this weekend, it looks like somebody threw out a TV on the side of the road. There's trash bags all down through it, and we send somebody out there to clean it up, and within two weeks, it's, it's just really filthy again. So if any civic organization or anybody that feels like they want to adopt a road, please come out, Henry County will provide you with vests, and you can pick up the trash, and we'd be greatly appreciated and help save some tax dollars as well. But at the end of every meeting, I'd like to say something positive. This time, I'm going to talk about Henry County 4-Hers. Henry County 4-H, fifth and sixth grade, under the guidance of Henry County Extension Office, competed at the 4-H District Project Achievement Competition this past Saturday. Henry County had the largest delegation with over eighty-six competitors, and seventy-nine present of our 4-Hers either placed first, second or third, which I think is very impressive and shows a really good group of guys. This was a multi-county competition, and we are proud of all the outstanding Henry County 4-H members and our employees at the Henry County Extension Service who helped to guide the mentors and community youth program. I also want to let citizens know that people with juniors and seniors in high school, the Henry County Library System is now offering free PSAT and SAT online study guides as well as practice tests for all the price of just a library card. So if you need to take the PSAT and SAT, please come down to the Henry County Library System and you can do it for free. With that, I yield the floor.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I want to take this opportunity to make some comments. We have spent a good deal of time tonight discussing the importance of making sure that we have a well-fleet, maintained fleet for our many departments and also the emergency vehicles. As a matter of fact, we took about one point seven- As a matter of fact, we took about $1.7 million out of our savings, which is called Fund Balance, to do that. Now, we all agreed, and obviously the vote went 6-0 for all of this, we all agree that it is in the best interest of our citizens, and for that reason, tonight, the board approved taking a substantial amount of funds from Fund Balance to ensure that our employees have adequate tools to serve and protect you. I would like to turn your attention now to another area that is well overdue for maintenance and repairs. It is our worn-out fleet of employees. Since the recession began around 2008, these employees have weathered furlough days and several years of no increases in their wages. They have seen their job responsibilities increase because of our inability to add staff. They have seen their cost of benefits increase substantially while receiving no cost of living and no chance of merit increase. Despite of all these challenges, they have maintained, we have, they have remained dedicated public servants. As always, our employees are the most prized assets in Henry County government. Take an example of an employee who started work for Henry County, making an entry level, salary of somewhere around $25,000. That equates to about $12 an hour. Prior to the recession, this employee would have received a COLA increase in varying amounts for most years, and would have looked forward to a longevity increase every two years. I went to work in Henry County in '03 and left in '10, and there, last year, we went to your longevity and got raises. This employee did their job well and received outstanding reviews from their supervisors. They saw their workloads increase when positions became vacant and were not able to be filled. They saw their pay actually decrease when furlough days were necessary. However, the employee did not complain. In fact, the consensus among our county employees was that they were willing to support furlough days rather than see coworkers lose their job because something had to give. And the recession loomed on, and the county had to make more difficult choices, and the results fell on employees. In 2014, the board had to pass a larger portion of health care coverage onto the employees. In fact, I'm told that many employees decided to change from the 90-10 coverage that they had in the past to the 80-20 coverage, and still felt an increase. We all know that a dollar earned in 2008 doesn't spend as far as a dollar earned today. In fact, when factoring in inflation, it would take a dollar and 10 cents today to buy what it took, a dollar to buy in 2008. Our employees cannot continue to be asked to bear the burden of the economy any longer. Things are looking up for the county and looking up for the economy, and it is time that the county employees begin to see the results of their dedication and long-suffering. I will continue to say that the best asset the county has is its employees. Ladies and gentlemen, it is time we take care of this worn fleet as well. I am proposing a 5% increase to all county employees, full and part-time, beginning January the 1st, 2015. It is the right thing to do, and we can do this without increasing property tax in the 2014-15 budget. And I know that I can count on y'all to, to help me and support this to make it happen. County Managers, you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I've got a couple of things. The first thing that I'd like to do is I'd like to thank our speakers today from the audience. I think the, I think the debate was excellent. You all were professional, you were articulate, you were well-prepared, you were respectful. There was no insulting, there was no name-calling or finger-pointing, and I think that we got the desired result from a positive public debate. And I just hope that going forward, that the county continues to have meetings that are this professional, where our citizens are well-prepared, and they're respectful of the board and members of the staff. We can hope that that happens. I would like to thank my Board of Commissioners tonight for your courage and your wisdom in electing to approve these vehicle purchases and this movement of money from Fund Balance. I want our citizens to know that we found ourselves in a rather enviable position. We've been able to save some money, we found out about it through an audit, and rather than wait and go through the budget process, which would be months down the road, the commissioners saw fit, as the chairman said, to begin addressing some much-needed equipment and vehicle needs now. We spent about $3.8 million tonight. And the truth is, we probably need about $15 million more to get us to where we need to be. But this is a great step in the right direction. It took the commissioners a lot of courage, they've spent a lot of time with staff educating themselves, and I applaud them for taking this positive step and helping us. I know Elton Alexander has left, but he likes to talk about world-class. I like to talk about taking the county from good to great. And this is a step from taking us from good to great. I would also like to thank our department heads. They came tonight, they were well-prepared, they were articulate, they told you what they were replacing. I think they served the public good. It obviously showed a lot of work and hard work on their part, and I would like to also commend the members of our staff. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for that recommendation for pay increases for our employees, and we will certainly try to absorb your recommendation into the budget for next year because you are absolutely right. Over the course of the last 12 months, we've given most of our employees a 2% raise, and our public safety employees a 4% raise. These are long overdue, and just a drop in the bucket to where we need to be. And I appreciate, as we go into budget preparation here in the next month or so, that vote from you to increase the salary of our employees. And with that, I'll yield back. Thank you.
County Attorney, do you have any comments?
No, I do not, thank you.
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, March the 3rd at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, March the 17th at 6:30 p.m. on regular meetings. Tuesday, April the 7th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, April the 21st at 6:30. Does somebody move to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion District 3, Second District 1, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Good evening.